This is the October 19th, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Montgomery Independent School District. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Dr. Morrison, are there any special recognitions? I'm guessing there are.
You are very observant, Dr. Fuller. We have an amazing special recognition. I say special recognition because this outstanding group of students, this amazing program at Montgomery High School under the leadership of a truly amazing individual could be recognized every month. But if you recognize something all the time, you don't always appreciate it. So we are really excited to have our Montgomery High School Choir Program under the amazing Director of Heather Orr. And Justin Marine, are you going to introduce Ms. Orr?
Good evening, Board. Yes, this is a group that is definitely no stranger to recognition and accolades. We have tonight the Montgomery High School Madrigal Choir Band, Choir, led by Ms. Heather Orr, and they are an a cappella choir that is the most recently recognized on a national level in September when the Foundation for Music Education named the Montgomery Madrigals as a national winner of its Mark of Excellence National Choral Honors Project. In this competition, over 236 of the finest musical ensembles from 38 different states entered the competition, and the Madrigals were named one of just three national winners, placing them among the most elite a cappella choirs in the nation. They have been invited to present their first convention performance at the 2022 Convention in Little Rock, Arkansas. Some major accomplishments of the program under the leadership of Ms. Orr include 79 UIL Sweepstake Awards, 39 Texas All-State Choir Members, 24 UIL Outstanding Performers, two National Convention Choir Titles, two Southwest Convention Choir Titles, and three Texas Music Educators Association Convention Titles. So tonight, we want to recognize the amazing achievements of our students in the choir, and they'd like to come up and do a performance for the Board. I think it'd be best if the Board maybe come and grab a seat in the front row.
Let's just spread out a little bit. Thank you for having us here tonight. These are the Madrigal Kids, and we're going to sing a piece that should be familiar to many of you. It's called "Time After Time."
(Singing) Time after time. And I'm caught up in circles, confused, nothing new. Then I flash back all night, almost at midnight. Whoa, whoa, who cares of memory? Time after time. You say oh so, I call behind. Whoa, whoa, the second hand unwise. If you're lost, you can look and you will find me. Find me. Time after time. If you're far away, look at you, I'll be waiting for you. Time after time. (Singing) Time after time. If you're lost, you can look and you will find me. Find me. Time after time. If you're far away, look at you, I'll be waiting for you. Time after time. Time after time.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Oh, yeah, yeah. Come on over. I was excited.
I'm like, don't send them away. You guys will squeeze in. The board's gonna get behind you.
Okay.
If you're shorter, you don't have to be in your positions. Like, if you're shorter and I can't see you, go ahead and come to the front. If you're taller, you can switch to the back. Do you want to tell them where to go? The board kind of center this direction. There we go. Laurie, one more. I can get your head that way. Yeah. There we go. Keep coming. Perfect.
I know we have some parents in the audience. If you want to get a little closer to pick them. I know there's no prop parents.
One, two, three, four, five. Okay. I have a dog. Hold on, your parents want it too.
All right, three, two, one. Thank you. There.
Thank you so much.
When they first open their mouth, you play.
You have to tell me too.
Oh, okay.
Thank you to the Madrigals, and Ms. Orr, thank y'all so much. One more round of applause for them, please. You're correct. You picked a song that most of us knew from the 80s, so thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, next, public comments. We do have two registered speakers. For public comments tonight, we ask, first of all, thank you for registering to speak so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. We are going to, I will give you a five-minute time limit. I will give you a two-minute warning and a one-minute warning. There are only a limited number of instances in which the Board can respond to you during public comment. We cannot take votes. We cannot respond. We cannot say that we're going to take action if it's not on our agenda. So we ask that you please keep your comments respectful and focused, and we also ask that if your comments are directed at a staff member, we prefer to address those through our BED Local Policy. So with that, I will welcome our first speaker, Joe Santini. Mr. Santini, the podium's yours.
I have a few handouts. Am I allowed to turn them into you guys?
Sure.
Or just give them? How do you want me to do that?
Sure. Sean, will you? And you gotta let me get my clock up, Mr. Santini. Sorry.
Yes, sir. No, you're fine, sir.
All right, it's all you.
Good evening, school board members. I'm here tonight to reveal to you that CRT and the immorality of some educators have infiltrated MISD from elementary through high school. My name is Joe Santini. I'm a certified teacher and currently a substitute for MISD. Recently, while substituting for an elementary school, I was supposed to read a board-approved story that has questions in vocabulary far beyond an elementary student's capability. The story is about Bessie Coleman, the first Black woman to receive her pilot's license while in France in 1922. She was quoted saying, "The air is the only place free from prejudice." The students are supposed to elaborate on what she meant by this quote and the vocabulary which includes racism, tolerance, and prejudice. What is the reasoning for this sensitive subject of racism to be presented to young children that have no clue what any of this means? This opens the door to CRT and the Marxist ideology of division based on race. Also, in the same class, on district laptops, students chose a video on their story app. One of them shows two boys speaking about being future presidents while both wearing blue shirts that save vote. A red shirt is purposefully left out. We all know what blue means. Although these might seem insignificant, this is how indoctrination begins. At the junior high, CNN 10, which resembles CNN, the most liberal news station, is approved by the Board as an educational tool. This continues to influence students to follow the path of the leftist ideology. Students I have spoken to said it's absolutely left-leaning. Next, at the junior high, my fears of a leftist teacher going after vulnerable children has become a reality. Recently, in the seventh, recently, an innocent seventh-grade girl went to her parents for help because the teacher directed her to read a book called Cinderella is Dead. The name Cinderella is used to lure innocent children to read this muddied-up version to deceive kids into thinking this is a decent story. Out of concern for their daughter, her parents requested me to present this letter to you. As the book fair was approaching, my seventh-grade daughter was given a suggestion to read the book Cinderella is Dead. She was interested in this book after the teacher told her it was a really well-written book and that she should read it. She decided to take a look at the description of the book. And there was a clue that this was a tale of a young woman named Cinderella set in a typical fairy tale setting, who decided that she did not want to marry a prince but would rather marry her best friend, Aaron. Upon reading this blurb, my daughter decided to investigate the storyline of this book further to see if she possibly misunderstood the context. Surely, her teacher would not be suggesting her to read a lesbian love story in seventh grade. Digging deeper, she confirmed that this story was a lesbian coming-of-age story. Other write-ups call it a pansexual novel with feminist agendas. Some call it a queer young adult fantasy. The Montgomery High School has allowed the gay pride flag to be displayed throughout the school, claiming it's a safe space for students to speak to a specific teacher. Where are our normal counselors, not activists? Now, on National Coming-Out Day, students are roaming the halls wearing the blue, pink, and white transsexual flag on their back like a cape. It's apparent these students do not have to follow dress code. Finally, a teacher displays the Marxist Organization BLM Incorporated sticker on her computer covered by a yellow see-through post-it for all to see. The normalcy of what education should be has been hijacked by activist teachers that do not share our Christian family values. The goal of the Marxists is to indoctrinate and transform our children and to remove their moral compass we instill at home. I'm here to work with you, to improve and protect our children, so we do not become the next Loudoun County. Several people want to know, who presented this curriculum and ideology to the Board, and why was it approved? We no longer accept this as the norm. Let's get back to the basics of what education is meant to be, certainly not sexual content with minors and racial division. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santini. Next up, Shelby Smith.
Good evening. Shelby Smith, Principal at Mayling Ranch Elementary. And I'd like to thank Mr. Santini for being here to share his concern. As our substitute needs have increased greatly this year, he has been a tremendous resource for us, and I thank him for that. I do, however, want to take an opportunity to address the lesson that was brought under question this evening. This was a short reading comprehension assignment that highlighted the incredible achievements of Bessie Coleman, the first Black woman in the world to receive her pilot's license. I'd like to read the short paragraph detailing Bessie Coleman. "Bessie Coleman was the first Black woman in the world to receive her pilot's license. 'The air is the only place free from prejudice,' said Coleman. After receiving her pilot's license in 1922 in France, she returned to the US and made her first flight as an African-American woman. During a time in US history when there was discrimination against Black people, Coleman became an aviation pioneer. She performed stunts, parachuted, and did flying trick aerial shows. While practicing for one of her shows, her plane crashed and she was killed. Bessie was only 34 years old. After reading the short selection, the following questions were asked and answered as part of the material. Why was Bessie Coleman famous? Where did Bessie receive her pilot's license? What do you think Bessie meant when she said the air is the only place free from prejudice? And what legacy did Bessie Coleman leave for future generations? It's important to point out that our assignment was in alignment with the TEACs, the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills, the standards adopted by the State Board of Education by which we always teach. Through teaching the TEACs and standards using state-board-approved curriculum and materials, students are able to learn about and identify events as well as the achievements and heroic actions of so many who have shaped the history of our nation." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. There are no other public comments registered at this time. We will move to the consent agenda. Board members, are there any, is there anyone that would like to pull an item from the consent agenda for discussion? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Hopkins, is there a second?
I'll second.
Miss Horton, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed and abstain, the consent agenda passes as presented. Next, we are moving to action items. First up, consider approval of managed service providers for copiers, printers, alignment with Goal 3.
Thank you, Dr. Fuller. It's not always that we get a chance to present to the Board something that is going to make us more efficient, more effective, save money, and make your teachers and employees really happy. But I think tonight, we're going to accomplish all that, and we have Chris Lynn, our Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, and Amanda Davis, our Director of Technology, to share with you how we're going to try to accomplish all those things.
Good evening. As Dr. Morrison said, we're here to talk about the exciting topic of copiers and printers. And so as we begin, Amanda's gonna walk us through our comparison of current versus the proposed contract, our proposed contract benefits, and answer any questions that you have. I just wanted to get us started by letting you know, when I entered the district, having conversations with staff members from across the district, copiers and frustrations around copiers seemed to come up frequently. And so one of the things that Amanda will cover is our current agreement with ImageNet was a five-year agreement that ended August 31st of 2021. And so during that time since August, we have been continuing on a monthly plan with them while we research additional options. We went through a process to visit with multiple companies about these services, and we're bringing forward a recommendation this evening to, for you to select Function 4 for those services moving forward. So Amanda and her staff have been tremendous throughout this process. They have done numerous site visits with all of these vendors besides making sure that the proposals meet the district needs. So tremendous effort from our technology staff throughout this process.
All right. Well, the next couple of slides are not going to be very engaging. They're more numbers. So our current-
Chris, what are you talking about? They're numbers. Of course, they're.
They are. I mean, well, they're not fancy like the last board meeting that I attended. So our current contract, right now, we are spending close to $14,000 just on leasing copiers. Our monthly copier allotment and printer allotment varies for your cost per click, so we are charged for every single time somebody makes one single copy, and that cost is actually sent to the campuses currently. So right now, we're doing a reconciliation monthly with our campuses, where they're paying their bills monthly, and our average cost over the last three years has been $331,460. That is on our current contract. Our proposed contract, our leasing costs will go down to as low as $7,000. There's still a little bit of adjustment depending on specific configurations for the campuses. Our monthly copier allotment, we're gonna have a base cost, and with that base cost, we get so many impressions of black and white and so many impressions of color. And then our overages, if you will notice, are actually cheaper on the new one than on the current contract for both the copier and the printer allotments. So if you compare the two side by side, our yearly cost will be as low as, this is the bottom dollar, of $177,000. This is our average cost of $331,000. So some of the benefits of our new contract. So this is a, when they come out, they will have a total service call. So ImageNet right now only comes out and fixes one single problem. Sometimes they have the parts on them, sometimes they don't. Our total service call, they will pull everything from that machine, check it from top to bottom. If there's something that is about to go out or needs to be serviced within the next month, they will go ahead and do that when they come out for that service call. Their average response time, because they are in sugar land, is about 2.8 hours, but we will get a call from our technician within one hour to schedule a time with the campus principal to come out. Not campus principal, the secretary. Campus principal, secretary. There we go. If a copier is going to be down for longer than a day, they will provide a loaner to us. So that has been a big concern at some of our campuses because we have several copiers that are, have been out for weeks at a time with no guarantee of it being fixed. We're also going to have an optional option to scan to the cloud, so we'll have our OneDrive and Google Drive mapped out. So if there's something that you don't necessarily need to have right away, you can scan it to the cloud and store it all day long. We'll have onsite training, both at the beginning of the school year and after winter break, to catch anybody that needs additional help. There's gonna be lamination. There's gonna be training modules kind of posted to where they can scan a little QR code and figure out how to work the system. And we're also gonna have an online portal to track our service calls to our campuses when supplies are ordered and to also monitor print volume as well as the PaperCut system, which we are currently using. And do you guys have any questions?
On the monthly cost of currently, it's approximately $14,000, and the new one is as low as $7,000. I know that you said there's some adjustments that might need to be made there. Are we talking thousands, or is it just, I mean, do you have any idea like what the max could be for the monthly?
So the cost for the monthly leasing, we chose our right size leasing option. So basically, that means that we're providing an up-charge to what they currently have. So if they have a copier that only does 75 pages per minute and it's hitting the max of its life, maybe we move up to 90 pages per minute. So all of that has been calculated in already. We've also taken out copiers that were not being used as efficiently as they should be and adding in copiers in places where they need to go. So that's just for the copier piece. As we start looking at printers and needing to be life-cycled, working with Function 4, we will come up with a plan either to lease those pieces or to buy them and then have the cost be rolled into our monthly base. So that's where your adjustment's gonna go.
Thank you.
So just clarifying, I've been a teacher, and so I know how important copiers are, and breaking down is a major issue. That scares the teacher. Anyway, in comparison, just to clarify, on the current contract, they have a certain number of clicks or copies they can make, and on the other one, they do not, which has pros and cons to it both ways. Right. So the campus will still monitor their clicks using PaperCut, so it's gonna be the same process as they're currently doing. It's just they're not going to get that monthly bill to be charged for those. So they're still gonna have an allotment that they give teachers, and they can adjust that moving forward. You know, does one teacher do the copies for the entire department? Then that person probably needs more copy clicks than somebody else that's not copying as much. So those adjustments will still be made at the campus. It's just overall, that's our monthly quota for copy clicks. And that one will probably be adjusted a little bit, just given history of what we're using. Okay.
And on the service call, it's same day?
Same day. Yes. Yep. So they work from 8:00 to 5:00 normally for their service call, and they actually even have a help desk that we can call, which if our technicians on our campus are making that call, they can work them through the problem right there. So if it's something that they can fix on-premise for us to fix, then they'll work with us to do that versus having to send somebody out and wait.
Are they giving training to our techs?
They're giving training to everybody. So we're gonna schedule training the first day back when, on January 3rd. So we are taking all the copiers off the campuses over Christmas, and they're gonna come back with brand-new copiers. Christmas.
Other questions? All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Function 4 as the Managed Service Provider for copiers and printers as presented.
And a second? Mr. Hammond, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Opposed, abstain, that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lynn and Amanda. All right, next. My paper's going here. We have the consideration of approval for expenditure of Specialized Learning Program Evaluation. Dr. Morrison?
Thank you, Dr. Fuller. We have Courtney Clover, our Executive Director of Specialized Learning, coming forward. As you know, to our Board and our community, we've made a commitment to continuous improvement. That continuous improvement is part of our strategic plan. It's part of how we are moving forward to truly try to become the premier school district in the state of Texas. And sometimes, you do need outside expertise to come in and give you hard truths and to tell you that as much progress as you've made, there's more to be made. As much as you'd like to believe the results are as good as they could be, they could be better. And so you need to get outside expertise to really help you along that journey. Through our strategic plan process, we spend a lot of time on our special education programs and how we are servicing our special education students. This is an area that we know. We have got a lot of room to improve. And to help us along that journey, we want to get some of that outside help and expertise. It goes without saying, but I want to say it anyway. Anytime that the expenditure is above the Board limit, we're going to bring it for the Board for approval. And if the Board so approves to have this program review, like we've done with the staffing report last year, as we did with the Human Resources Report, as we are doing tonight with the CTE Report, we will make that report public. We will share it with the Board, and it will go into the transparency area of our school website. So with that, Ms. Clover.
Well, good evening, President Fuller, Dr. Morrison, and Board of Trustees. It's nice to meet you guys all in one room at the same time. So thank you for having me tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to bring forward to you the request for this expenditure. Like Dr. Morrison explained, we are really looking for objective data in order for us to make improvements in efficiency and effectiveness for the services we provide for our students who are eligible under Section 504, Students Identified with Dyslexia, and Students Identified Under Special Education. So the proposal that we are bringing forward will include interviews and focus groups, surveys, students, parents, and staff, folder audit review, so that we can look from 36,000-foot view all the way down to cellular level of, you know, what does our documentation look like? And then what does that actually look like in the classroom? So that audit also includes classroom observations. So really trying to get a very comprehensive review so that we can- so that we can have some targeted areas to know where to start, where we can get our biggest bang for our buck in improvement, if you will. Um, we are also, um, many of you are, are connected to special education and programming for students with disabilities. And I'm grateful that you guys have that, um, background knowledge. So, um, Texas currently, um, we are working on how just students with dyslexia are being identified. It's a huge area of focus for the state of Texas currently, um, in alignment with what the federal guidelines are for identifying students with learning disabilities. So this will also help us, um, create a roadmap for how we look at, at creating, um, services, programming, staffing, um, especially in light of being a fast-growth district. We know that we're going to need to be thinking about how we improve programming now and in the future for our students in the next few years. So we, um, are presenting to you tonight, um, a program, um, proposal by a group, um, out of Austin called Gibson Consulting. The expenditure and the, and again, background information, um, I think I was able to hopefully capture everything we're looking for there. The expenditure total cost projected is eighty-one thousand dollars. Fortunately for us, we had, um, leader, leadership that was forward-thinking and having planned for some of that under the strategic plan, I believe, um, goals one and three. And so, um, so some of those expenditures, we are going to be able to capture through, um, S R grant funding. But we will need to, um, also have that, that expenditure approved to include some local funds. So if you will, um, it's the recommendation of the administration that you approve the expenditure for the MISD specialized learning evaluation to be conducted by Gibson Consulting.
Thank you, Ms. Clover. Uh, board members, any questions?
Quick question, is it eighty-one thousand fixed or is it a variable potential on that?
Um, no, sir, it's fixed at this point. If there's, if there were to be any, um, changes to the contract or any negotiated amounts that would have to be changed, that would have to, um, be in partnership with the district and we would bring that information to you.
Do we know the last time we did an evaluation on this program?
I'm not aware of a formal evaluation. Um, the district internally has, has audited ourselves on certain, um, components and we do report data, um, annually federally and to the state. But as for a comprehensive needs assessment, I don't know of one that exists in the district.
Oh, it's a time for it.
Yes, I, I believe that, yes, sir.
Last time, Mr. Dennis, I would say.
I know six years.
I just wanted to say that, um, having got, that had the privilege in the past to be a special education teacher in the district and dyslexia, um, I'm very excited about this. This is, this area is obviously very near and dear to me and on, not just as a teacher, but also as a parent. I have kids that are, um, affected by these programs. And so I just want to say, I read through the plan, uh, that Gibson has laid out. It's extremely thorough, um, and I was very excited about all the different ways they're going to look into, uh, our programs, um, so that we can, um, move to even greater for all these students. So I was just very impressed with their plan and how it's laid out, yeah.
Other questions?
Yeah, real quick, I see in the, in the proposal, um, you had mentioned the fixed cost of eighty-one thousand dollars. We do have options it, within that, right? Am I reading this correctly?
Correct, it would only be less.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That would be the total amount including surveys.
Okay.
So if we were to optionally, um, opt out of surveys, it would be a lesser amount.
Okay.
And, um, it did say in there how long the process takes, isn't it about, is it five or six months?
Yes, it, it is, and with that comprehensive piece, um, there will be lots of onsite visits, um, focus groups, some virtual, some in person, um, and then the data collection in of itself, um, is pretty, there's some, some, um, pretty decent he- lifting that has to take place with collecting all of that data and submitting that to them. They are extremely reputable, um, at least in, in my world and I think in other leadership circles, other districts. I think that they had listed several of the other districts they work with, so, um, nationally and within the state of Texas. So, um, we felt like they were a, a great vendor choice, um, to move forward with this.
Will they be talking directly to, um, teachers in the classroom and also to parents of students with?
Yes, ma'am, so part of those focus groups will include, um, teacher focus groups, student focus groups and parent focus groups. So yes, there will be opportunity for those face-to-face, um, question and answer. And then if we do opt into the surveys, that survey data would also be collected in those areas too.
And that conversa- those conversations with all of those stakeholders, but especially our employees can be very important. We want our employees to feel empowered by this process and not feel it's being done to them, but with them. Because ultimately, as we saw with the H R view, if we're get data, we're get information, a lot of it will be uncomfortable, uh, but it will help with that change process because then the question is, what are we going to do with it and of our employees and our parents? And then even some cases, our students are part of the process. Then when we get to the recommendations, we can do that together as well. So absolutely those, those conversations directly with employees and parents will be essential of this process.
I think so far, we've just seen such great outcome from, in the past, that we've looked at, from looking at H R and other departments and I just make super excited about this. Do what?
The, the, uh, energy audit as well. I mean, every audit we've done, we've gotten a lot of good feedback from, I agree.
They help you decide what schools to visit?
Can you help, help us decide? Absolutely.
No, no.
Oh, will they?
Yes, I think they said four schools or something they would.
They would, they will. So I, um, I think what they'll typically will look at is, um, they're going to look for variation in student population, variation in disabilities, variation in continuum of service programming from the most restrictive to the least restrictive. Um, and then also variation in age of students that we serve. So they're going to want to capture a sample, yes, ma'am, that's representative of all of those different, um, student groups.
Mr. Moreno, when this audit, if approved tonight, is, uh, uh, shared with the board, will be publicized on our website?
Yes.
Where would one be able to find it?
The standard question.
You look preoccupied, I just wanted to make sure that you were engaged in the conversation.
All right.
Poor Justin.
Board members, any other questions? All right, hearing none, is there a motion?
Yeah.
Uh, I recommend that the board approve the expenditure for the MISD specialized learning program evaluation to be conducted by Gibson Consulting in the amount of eighty-one thousand dollars.
All right, and is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Hopkins, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that motion carries. Ms. Clover, I hope you get great information out of this, thank you.
Great, I'm grateful, thank you so much.
All right, next up, uh, we are moving now into information items, ladies and gentlemen. A riveting report on our delinquent tax report.
Dr. Fuller, I sense a little sarcasm there. And, uh, I think that the delinquent tax report could be a highlight of our board meeting. And honestly, uh, myself and, and Mr. Lynn have had an opportunity to meet, uh, with our delinquent tax collectors several times. And this information is very important for our district as we plan, as we consider our budget process. And, uh, we wanted to make sure we shared it with you tonight, so Mr. Lynn.
Yeah, I don't know why everybody's hating on numbers and, and tax collections tonight. But, um, I, I do want to introduce you to Mr. Alan Bush. He is with our delinquent tax collection firm, Line Barger, Goggan, Blair and Sampson. Did I get all that right? Okay, I just want to make sure I didn't forget anybody. They have been unable to join us, um, in the recent past due to COVID. And so we wanted to get them in front of you. Um, this will be, uh, from this point on, an annual report, um, that they provide the board with just to give you an idea of, of how our delinquent taxes, um, collections are going. And so, Mr. Bush, if you're ready, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Howdy, I'm Alan. And, uh, I am your delinquent tax collection lawyer with the Line Barger Law Firm. And I know that tax collection sounds like a dirty term. It's really not that bad, but it does make me think about Mike Rowe with Dirty Jobs. You ever heard of his sweat pledge? Sweat pledge number four says this, "I do not follow my passion, I bring it with me." So one thing that I pride about our team out in Conroe is we bring our passion with us to everything that we do. And I think that the report we're going to see tonight is going to show some great results over the past couple of years despite challenges that we've had with COVID nineteen as well as a high number of tax deferrals in our community. So let me help put that in perspective for a minute, some of the success. Let's talk a bit about COVID nineteen. We all know what that was about. Back during twenty-twenty, we were collecting, or fiscal year twenty-twenty, we were collecting tax year nineteen, twenty-nineteen. And during that year, we spent three months of our collection year, a critical three months, as we're trying to get up and going on all stop. The tax office, who handles tax collections for the school districts on, in the first instance, then they turn it over to us when it gets late enough. The tax office turned all collection council and said, "Hey, guys, the community is hurting right now with COVID nineteen. Things are shutting down. I want you guys to go with no outbound calls, no outbound letters, no lawsuits, no service of process." Every one of those things are the tools that we use to go into the community and notify folks they have delinquent taxes and to please, please, please come get with us at the tax office and get them squared away. So all outbound activities in a business world, perhaps your sales activity was shut down for three months. Despite that, we saw, still saw good results. And from where we sit today, we do have a high proportion of what's called tax deferrals. And I know that we haven't reported to you guys recently, or perhaps in quite a while. Let me give you a quick, uh, heads up on what a tax deferral is. A tax deferral goes through the appraisal district, right, which is the keeper of the tax roll. And when you are sixty-five years or older or you have certain disabilities, you can go to the tax, the, the appraisal district, fill out a form and they'll grant you a tax deferral. When that happens, that tax deferral is an all-stop on collection activities on your account. We will not, we cannot be sending letters, we cannot be filing suits. It's an untouchable amount that builds up until that tax deferral eventually comes off, maybe twenty years down the line. So what we saw here is, uh, we have a thirty-nine, or I'm sorry, thirty-four point nine percent of the, of the delinquent tax roll in our district today is under a tax deferral and all stops, so we can't touch it. And that's high compared to other districts. Just to give you two quick benchmarks of districts we work with in county, Splendoris D is at eighteen percent, New Caney at seventeen. So we're sitting roughly double compared to some other districts in the county. And those are just the ones you report on. But here's the good news, there's a lot of good news in our report and it's kind of dense. So I'm going to cut straight to the meat. It may be in your board packet looking like this. Next time, I'll probably bring a PowerPoint because that's a lot easier. So let's cut right to the heart of it. On about page six of this PDF, right after the pie chart, you're going to run into a chart that looks like this, a bar graph. And yes, I am holding it the right direction. This chart represents basically, uh, the past three tax years, uh, the first three months of collections on it, from July all the way through September. So that would be tax year eighteen on the left, nineteen in the middle and twenty on the right. Twenty is the one that we're collecting now. We effectively wind up collecting one year in arrears because of the way tax delinquencies work. Now, this spreadsheet basically is what I think about as the scoreboard in the third inning. Early on in the game, how are we doing? So what we're seeing here is we see that in, uh, in the, in the, in the first year on the left, we saw we were doing pretty doggone good. We expected to take a major bite with COVID nineteen. With that all-stop, with the economic stuff going on in our community, we did not see that materialize. Instead, collection percentages stayed very close to the same. Same thing fast-forwarding to this collection year, we're still looking pretty doggone good. But remember, this is just third inning numbers. And when we flip a page, we see, well, gee, what happens? What's the scoreboard look like at the end of the game? And this is where we really want to focus our time. Because fortunately, our team has done a fantastic job collecting taxes right as we're heading into a potential look at a bond. So that's great news. The first year over in the left, collecting tax year twenty-eighteen, we did well. But then you'll see as you move into the middle group of columns, we've, we've gone up by more than five percent in each of our two fields. Now, when you flip to the right column, rightmost column, that is collections year-to-date on tax year twenty-twenty. So there's still nine months of the year out there to continue collecting and building these bars to get as good as the last set of years. So the point I want to draw out of this though is, we saw increased collections between two years ago and one year ago. And right now, judging by just the first three months of the year, we're looking pretty strong, hoping to track at least as well as we did last year. No promises because we're talking third inning, but we're looking good. So we're hoping to continue that strong, steady trend of the delinquent collections. If we flip one more page to the last of these bar charts in the board report, now what we're doing is, we're not just considering base tax dollars, which was the last spreadsheet. We're now considering base tax, which is the amount you see on your tax bill that you get in the mail when it's not passed due. Now, on this spreadsheet, we're considering penalties, interest, all those kinds of things. It's added on to those base tax dollars. When we consider these penalties and interests, the spread between two years ago and one year ago widens even more. The picture looks even better. So we're hoping to be able to continue that trend. If you have any questions about the depth behind the details you've got here, I'm happy to answer them or the other spreadsheets. But I know that you have a business, a busy meeting tonight.
Well, I, I do have one question, Mr. Mr. Bush.
Yes, sir.
Um, you said that our thirty-four, you said thirty-four percent of the delinquent taxes are in deferral. But I see that we have about fifteen hundred owners, eighteen hundred accounts that are in, that are delinquent. Is that high relative to other districts? I mean, do we have a high number of delinquency in our district?
I wouldn't say, without really looking at it, I wouldn't say that y'all have a very high number of delinquent accounts. I know the tax office has a fantastic job weeding out the collections before it ever gets to us. But what I see anecdotally about your district is each delinquent account is generally fairly large. Because our values here, we're fairly property-rich district. So we do see larger delinquencies here than in other, other places.
I, I got you. Board members, other questions?
Is there some reason we have higher deferrals?
Uh, I, I can speculate. Anecdotally, we have, uh, a number of communities around the lake, right? And most of these deferrals are going to be oftentimes an over sixty-five or disability. Those are the two big ones, right? So something medical or sixty-five plus. And when I think about where those, you often see those, is you usually see those in places where folks go to retire. You see those routinely in lake communities, uh, other places along those lines. And, uh, if, if I think about, I'm going to go retire to the country, Montgomery ISD might be a place I'm looking at. So anecdotally, those would be my guesses is why we see a higher percentage of those.
Other questions? Mr. Bush, thank you.
All right, sure.
Thank you for all you do.
Happily, thank you, guys.
Okay, next up is, um, in our information items, is the required annual presentation for the twenty-one L E P student progress English learner program.
Thank you, Dr. Fuller. We know that the best teachers personalize learning and meet the student where they are and get them to where they need to be. Um, as a district, we have to have a plethora of programs and not have one strategy or one program that we think meets the needs of all of our students. An important component of how we're servicing all of our students is our commitment to students who speak English with limited proficiency. is our commitment to students who speak English with limited proficiency. And so, Dr. Busby is here tonight to present the annual report to the board and progress in this very important area.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so each year, you receive this presentation that kinda gives you an update of the progress that our English language learners are, are making. So, let's see, first here, this is just kinda the background of why we do this report. It is one of those requirements that you get the annual evaluation. And it's to help determine the program effectiveness. And you have to receive that report by November 1st. So, you usually see us in October. So, that report, as we go through this, you'll get a little bit of information about the academic progress that they're making, what kind of proficiency level in English, if we have students who are being reclassified as English proficient. And then we'll also talk a little bit about the professional development that our employees receive to support those students. So, in Montgomery ISD, we have two different programs, actually really three different models of how we service these students. So, we have some students who meet the requirements to be served through English as a second language, or ESL. In our early grades, pre-K through 5th grade, this would look like a teacher who is ESL certified and being able to provide the supports in the classroom in their core content areas. In the secondary level, it's a pull-out model. So, you have an ESL-certified teacher that may be pulling them to work on their English acquisition or specific strategies to help them in the classroom. Our other model is the dual-language, which is an immersion two-way program. So, it's both English and Spanish. And we currently have that in the elementary grades, pre-K through 5th. So, this is what our English learner population looks like in Montgomery ISD. We have, we represent nine different languages. So, the chart on the side there, you can see what some of the different languages are that have come to MISD that require some type of services. Some of these languages I didn't even know existed. So, you certainly learn something when people move from different areas. Of those, all those languages, that consists of 225 students who may qualify for services. 95 of those are served in our dual-language program. 126 of them are served in the ESL model. We've had just four families that have denied those language services. And in this current year, we have zero who had to be reclassified as an English learner, and one student who moved from an English learner to English proficient.
Dr. Busby, can you explain what that means, be reclassified?
Yes, so, they are, so they are given assessments each year to monitor their progress and where they are in their English acquisition. And so, depending on where they are in that progression, they will be reclassified. So, a student who may be an English learner, identified as an English learner, once they get to a certain level of proficiency, they'll move to that English proficient learner. And then they'll start to move into, move away from the services that they might be receiving. And then on a monitor basis, then eventually, just into the regular program. So, staffing for our programs, we have two different certifications. We have bilingual certified teachers, and then we have ESL certified teachers. So, we have eight bilingual certified teachers. That's to serve our students that are in that dual-language program in pre-K through 5th grade. Underneath here, in the kind of finer print, you see zero bilingual exceptions needed. So, we have to do a report to TEA each year. And basically, what that means is that we do not have any students that qualify for that program that are not being served by a certified teacher in that program. ESL certified teachers, we have 91 teachers with that certification that have students in their classroom. And again, underneath there, you'll see zero ESL waivers. Our Ms. Dehart, who was not able to be here tonight, but put all this great information together, is very thorough about checking those rosters at the beginning of the year and making sure that every student who does qualify for services is being served by a teacher who has that certification. Professional development, so our teachers who serve these different populations, not only do they have to go through all the professional development and training that all of our other teachers go through, there's additional training that they are offered and attend throughout the year. So, kinda through this word cloud, you'll see all kinds of different things that they do have to attend. Our MAC training is something that you probably hear for all of our teachers. That's our Montgomery-aligned curriculum. But within that curriculum, it is embedded with ways to support English language learners. So, they definitely focus on that area. Math strategies for English learners. There's a high-yield strategy specific for these type of learners. You'll see also Title III. Title III is our federal program that we receive funds for to support our English learners and our teachers that instruct those classes. So, they'll also put on different conferences and offer support trainings and things like that. So, we definitely tap into those resources as well. And then tell pass training, you'll also see that within this word cloud. And we'll talk about tell pass results here in just a moment. So, tell pass composite ratings. So, our students, and this is one of the assessment pieces we were talking about, that they're given each year to kinda monitor their progression in the English language. So, they are tested for listening, speaking, reading, and writing. This chart kinda shows you what our most recent results were. And the dark blue is our district, and in the lighter blue is the state. So, you can see we are right in line with our students' acquisition of the English language, right in line with what the state's progression is in that. The levels include, they can either be labeled as beginning, intermediate, advanced, or advanced high. Our STAR performance, this graph kinda shows you students who reach that level, that's considered achieved approaches, the approaches level, so that passing. And so, this is for each of the different areas here. However, you, we will see the asterisk at the bottom. These scores are actually below the state level in each of those areas for our current ELs. So, I'm sure your question is, so what are you gonna do about that? That is something that we have already started talking about. And it is reflected in our strategic plan, our Goal One. Of course, Goal One is all about academic achievement and subgroups and, and reaching all those different populations. So, a lot of those things are going to be addressed just within the big picture. However, there are specific programs that we want to look at a little bit closer. Just like you talked a little bit about the Special, Specialized Learning Program Review, we're gonna start looking at our dual-language as a program review. We're not gonna go out to a third party immediately. We have a new administrator on that campus, a couple of new personnel on that campus that's serving those students. So, we're gonna start with a smaller internal circle. We have some meetings that, I know Mr. Ingalls at MES has already started reaching out with parents. District and campus are starting to have meetings. So, this is something that we are starting that process and really gonna identify where are those strengths and weaknesses? And where do our teachers see a need for us to start those improvements? And questions?
Well, I was just curious, because I, I saw that under the tell pass, I guess.
Yes, ma'am.
They scored really high, advanced high in writing, grades three through 12. But then their STAR score was like 37%. So, I guess tell pass and STAR don't correlate very well.
Yeah, so, the tell pass is going to measure their level of English acquisition. So, can they speak it? Can they understand it? Can they write in a proficient English language? It's not necessarily an academic level. So, when you start looking at STAR performance and having to take a STAR test, it's such a different level of comprehension that you have to have on that. It's really kind of the next level.
Yeah, must be, yeah.
And that's why programming is really important. The old-school model was to pull the student out and teach them English. What are they missing when you're pulling them up to teach them English? Math, science, social studies, writing, the things that they get tested on. You know, students can come to us speaking no English, but be highly proficient in math, skilled writers, be wonderful readers. They just can't do those skills in English. And so, that's why rethinking the programming, rethinking the structure, making sure that we feel comfortable that we have the right program for our students is critically important.
Dr. Busby, thank you for all y'all are doing.
Thank you.
And we look forward to seeing what comes next for the LEP program. Next, we have our, one of our new initiatives that we're doing is a routine update from various departments. And tonight, we have the Career and Technical Education Department update. And so, Dr. Morrison?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Fuller. And again, for our community, one of the things that we have pledged to do is to have the different departments that support teaching and learning across our 10 campuses, share with the board on an annual basis progress in their departments, progress on their goals, and their alignment with our just-approved Montgomery ISD strategic plan. I am really excited about our presentation tonight. I have to be careful how I say that, because obviously, the delinquent tax report was, was exciting. And Justin is always a little challenged whenever we say that there's something more exciting than what he's gonna present. But I think when I say we're super excited about our new Director of CTE, Amy Vance, coming forward, I am really proud of what she's been able to accomplish in a very short period of time. This position did not exist last year. It was desperately needed. It was an important part of our strategic plan and our commitment to having all students walk across the stage in Montgomery ISD, not only college-ready, not only military-ready, but career-ready as well. She has dove right in. And, and where I really appreciate leadership is I gave her several opportunities, being new, to not be one of the first departments to present to the board. But she is engaging the community, and she is having so many communications that she wanted to share with the board and have opportunities for the board to ask questions and share insights around something I know which is very important to you, which is career technology education. So, with that, Amy Vance.
That's the T in technology, CTE.
Don't be fooled by the word technical or technology. I could, if any of y'all have met me, I could talk a lot about CTE. I'm really passionate about it. I could talk for two hours tonight about my goals and my plans and everything I have going on. But I've limited, being respectful of your time, I've limited it to just the pertinent things that are happening right now. And mentioned earlier, we'll get to it in the presentation about our program evaluation and audit from outside source that we brought in. And y'all have a copy of it, and it'll be integrated into the presentation. I'm gonna go over some vocabulary first, just because a lot of people aren't familiar with CTE. It's my language, but I know other people aren't familiar. And so, as I'm talking about things throughout the presentation, I want y'all to be educated and know what some of these words mean and how it affects Montgomery ISD and our students. Endorsements are a word that came about from House Bill 5, probably about five years ago. It was implemented by TEA that every student must declare an endorsement entering their ninth-grade year. And our endorsements that are offered are Business and Industry, Public Service, STEM, Arts and Humanities, and Multidisciplinary. I would, I explain endorsement kind of like how you get your bachelor degree. So, bachelor, I have a bachelor in science. I'm not a science expert. So, Business and Industry is very broad. That's what I, I consider the endorsement kind of like the degree you leave with. The career cluster, career clusters are what go under endorsements. And career clusters is what we're gonna put all of our courses under. And we, TEA recognizes and has put all of our classes under 14 career clusters. And currently, MISD offers 11 of the 14 career clusters, which is really awesome that we offer that many, but it leaves room for growth eventually down the road to add even more. Programs of study, we're also gonna talk about. That's what I wanna call your major. So, a program of study is under career clusters and very specified. And programs of study, they just implemented last year. And it's, it's aligned with our Perkins Five Act, which is our federal programming aligned with CTE. And it's something that got thrown on us last year, and it's continuing. They've even added more stuff to it over the summer. Completers, so completers is what they're wanting out of programs of study. It got added this summer. As, on our A through F accountability list, it is now a way for a student to get an accountability point on the A through F score for our schools. So, in the CCMR, the College Career Military Readiness Indicator, you could, a student can be a completer of a program of study. And how that's defined is completing three or more courses for four or more credits within the same program of study. This is new, because we used to be able to do endorsements. So, as long as you took course, four courses in Business and Industry, you're fine. They've now narrowed it and want kids to complete a program of study. And as you look at course sequences, the thought behind this, and I know kids don't know what they're gonna do, but our courses build on each other. And as they build, you're getting skills. And we can take these industry certifications. Instead of, when I was in high school, one year I took art, one year I took home ec, one year I took ag. But the thought is, when kids stay in these courses, culinary arts, for instance, by the time you're in your fourth year, you have the skills built to go out and do internships, to get your certifications. If you're moving around every year, you're not gonna develop workforce readiness for that type of program. And so, that's their thought behind. Now, we're gonna add it to schools and say, we're going to compare you to other districts and see how many completers you have in these programs of study, because those kids, we're gonna consider them workforce-ready because they've built skills in one area. And I put down there, Montgomery ISD offers 16 complete program of studies to our students. This is just a chart to talk about completers. And I'll show you the report from Texas. So, they kept giving us a warning, it's beginning last year, that we're gonna at some point collect data and draw a report on this from each district. And they did it this summer. And they're measuring how many non-CTE students we have, participants, explorers, concentrators, and completers. And quickly, a CTE participant is just a kid that took one course in high school. Of course, no CTEs, no CTE. An explorer is if you take two courses, but they don't have to be in the same program of study, you're just exploring. And then a concentrator is if you take two courses within the same program of study. And a completer is if you've taken three courses for four or more credits. The four or more credits comes in, cuz you could take three courses and your last one be a two-hour course that's welding or a practicum. You've still, as long as you have four credits for three or more, three classes for four more credits. This is that report I was telling you about, where they collected data on last year's completers, concentrators, and explorers, and participants. They're, they're not doing any, they're, we don't, they haven't sent us anything to compare it to. So, I know that's probably going in your minds, what are other districts doing? Because this just came on us, we didn't know this is when they were going to collect this and take this snapshot. I'm sure this year, they're gonna release more to our service centers, showing us comparable things within districts in our geographical area. And I'm, I'm excited to see that. I don't know where we fall. I don't like seeing as low of a number as we have. So, personally, I would like to see these numbers higher. But I also wanna see where districts similar to us, with similar programs, where they fall. I've highlighted Montgomery High School's on top, Lake Creek High School. And you kinda look by grade level and what percentage on the far-right side of how many kids we have this. And as we go through our district goals, I kinda use this data to start making some goals on how we can get kids to become completers. This is just showing you quickly how they relate. I've used education and training pathway. Like I said, the endorsement is public service here. Education and training is the career cluster. And underneath this career cluster, teaching and training is the program of study. So, these are the courses that we offer. If I go back to the example on how could this person be a completer, you don't have to take the last two classes. If you took those first three, that's three classes for four more credits. So, Principles of Education and Training, Human Growth and Development, and Instructional Practices, they would become a completer at the 11th grade level if they took all those in a row. They, these two-credit classes really do help a lot of leeway in their schedule. If for some reason their junior year, they took a different class, they took theater or something and went and took instructional practices senior year for those two credits, they would still become a completer. So, you don't always need four classes if you're in a two-credit course. Montgomery ISD offers a wide variety of career and technical education courses. As I mentioned, they offer a sequence of courses that provide students with coherent, rigorous content. CTE content is aligned with challenging academic standards and relevant technical knowledge and skills needed to prepare for further education and careers in our current emerging professions. professions. These are all of our career clusters that we currently offer. The career clusters that we do not offer is, I don't know why I'm drawing a blank right now, our automotive, which is transportation, distribution, and logistics. Of course, we don't have the facilities for that, so that eliminates that. There is an IT, an information technology pathway. We're looking on adding that pathway back. They moved all the computer science and the, those type of programming courses over to STEM. So we used to have information technology, and just last year, with programs of study, they moved it under STEM. So we have those, so we're going to add a networking pathway, hopefully, where our students can work with our IT department and that kind of thing, and that'll add back our information technology. And there's an energy, an oil and gas energy one as well. These are our programs of study under each career cluster here, if you'd like to see. The applied ag machinery is our ag mechanics, animal science, plant science. Architectural design is our interior design pathway. Digital communications is what our fashion design is, and we're adding some graphic design courses in there as well. Oh, the digital communications is the AV, the audiovisual pathway with our filming. Business, we've got accounting and financial services, a business pathway, and marketing and sales as well. And as I showed you, our education and training, we have our teaching and training pathway where our kids do ready, set, teach, and go into the classrooms in elementary schools and get to shadow a teacher. Our other programs of study that are offered is this healthcare therapeutic, and y'all know we offer our practical and health science courses through that, our pharmacy tech pathway, and our patient care tech as well. Culinary arts program is under hospitality and tourism. Cosmetology is under human services. Manufacturing, advanced manufacturing and machinery is actually robotics. So a lot of people think robotics is under STEM, and it's actually under the manufacturing pathway. Our STEM, we have engineering, and our law and public service, we have law enforcement. Our first district goal is MISD CTE will increase the number of students who are college, career, or military-ready as measured by domain one in the A through F accountability system through IBCs and program of study completers. IBC is an industry-based certification. And my strategy for this is to increase the number of industry-based certifications by aligning more current and future courses with IBCs. And more ways to increase the CTE program of study completers during our course catalog meetings this fall, is whenever that's going to happen. So that's how I'm going to introduce some more courses that are going to align with these industry-based certifications. As well as our current courses, we're implementing that. So our timeline for this, our course catalog completion for us to meet to get it ready to present, is the end of October. The next strategy, like I said, we're going to purchase these certifications for our current courses in the software that aligns with them. And by the end of the school year, we'll have that done and make sure that we also provide any applicable required teacher training that go along with these certifications and software as well by the end of the year. This is kind of hard to read, y'all might see it on your screens. This is a screenshot of our program evaluation, talking about our CCMR data that's collected on A through F accountability, our students' college and career military readiness. The top is some academic and advanced academics, and when you get down to the bottom, it has the CTE, which is the industry-based certifications. And we were at 5% in the last report. And the state averages 13.2% of students graduating seniors becoming college, career, military-ready through the certifications. I told you, they're adding now underneath that for next year, they're going to add completers to that as well. So if they don't get a certification, they can still complete a program of study and get a point to be in college, career, military-ready through that.
Amy, just very quick, I know when we're going through our strategic plan process, if we're presenting data about students going on to college, our district has by far the highest percentage of students going on to college. So we were wondering why we're hearing so much feedback, okay, that's great, proud of Montgomery ISD, but what about the students not going to college? And this is why data is really important, and you go to an outside program evaluator, because sometimes you don't like the data that you're getting presented, but then you have a choice. You can do something about it.
So, so I was going to wait till the end and ask, but now you've already asked the question. But so, a large majority of our population goes, student population goes to college. But a large, but we have a very low, I would, I would have expected to see something very different in our CTE numbers, a much higher number, and I think that's what we're talking about. But the question is, are we, do we have the right programs that they're not, that they don't want to be engaged in, or it's not? I often feel like our CTE programs don't match what the requirements and needs are of industry, or the population, or the region. So really, my question is, you know, why, why aren't we seeing more students engaged in CTE? And do we have CTE programs that match what they're interested in and what they can get jobs in?
Going to talk about it in my report. But when we come to questions, what part of that didn't get answered, ask me again.
So I-
Because I, I'm going to touch on it, and I'm going to show some data to back that up as well.
Okay, alright.
To add to that, there's something that our Perkins, I told you, our federal, our federal accountability program, the Perkins Five, it does what's called a CLNA, which is a comprehensive local needs assessment, which does workforce data in the area. And it, the hard part about that is it compares us to the Gulf Coast region.
I guess, you know, I went up to Willis ISD, and I was impressed by that facility, and then, but I actually started thinking about it afterwards, and I was actually not impressed. It was, it was great, it was a marvelous facility, but I left there with, okay, these kids can get jobs for nine bucks an hour, 10 bucks an hour. But what does that get them? So I'd like to, like to understand where MISD and where we need to go, and to get people real jobs that really pay good money, I mean plumbers, electricians, welders. Graphic, you mentioned graphic design. I mean, I don't know why anybody would want to go get a fashion, I mean, unless you're going to go to New York or LA and hope to get a fashion job. I guess from, from my perspective, put a CTE, we need to focus on things that kids can be interested in and actually earn a living from. Alright, I'll stop.
I agree. And that's what TA is really pushing by this, too, is instead of people just offering this course for them to take and this course for them to take, let's align them and have a pathway and a plan so kids can earn skills and get, and get things that are actually going to be workforce-ready. But like you said, we need to look at a lot of factors whenever we're trying to evaluate our programs and see how we can get our numbers up. This just talks about industry-based certification and what TA defines it as. Every industry-based certification is different. There's a list of 244 certifications, and he put the link on here in his report that's on TEA's website, that's approved by TEA, and it's accredited to count towards our CCMR indicator. It doesn't mean you can't get other industry certifications, but this is just the one for accountability that counts, that they have had committees and all kinds of, lots of research into to agree to this 244 list. These are our current certifications offered, and the ones in red are ones I'm adding this year. So you can see the ones in black, what we've been doing in the past. The serve-safe restaurant manager, we also do the serve-safe food handling, if anyone knows anything about the restaurant industry. It's a norm in the restaurant industry, but it's not identified by TEA, but we still offer and pay for it for our students to take. We do that, I didn't put it on there. CPR is the same way, we're doing CPR. OSHA, OSHA 10 is not on there, OSHA 30 is on the list, which is a lot of time in the classroom to get. In a lot of schools, we're doing OSHA 10, so they're kind of upset about that one, too. So the AV technology, we're going to add the Adobe Premiere Pro certification and the Adobe Photoshop. The health sciences are already getting their CCMA, the pharmacy tech, and the patient care tech. Education and trading, TA has an educational aid certification that we have to submit information on that student to TA that they have done so many hours in our program. So when they complete their program and turn 18, we can get TA documentation to get them an educational aid, which helps employability if they want to work in the schools while they're in college and that type of thing. The ag, the, right now, the veterinarian assistant is the only certification we offer to a handful of kids. We're adding the floral design from Texas State Floral Association certification to that, that all floral design students will get. And the American Welding Society, which is a welding industry certification, and it's, it's, it's a practical type of certification where you do a certain weld a certain way, and they visually certify you. It's not a written test like some of them, but it's still just as hard, and you've got a, they do it all year long working on it. The teachers have to go get certified, and I have them signed up to go get certified to be welding inspectors, to give the kids these certifications. Business marketing and finance, we're currently doing Microsoft Office Specialist and Expert certifications. We're going to add one to our business management courses called Entrepreneur and Small Business. It's a really awesome certification. And STEM, there's a handful of kids in the computer science pathway getting the Python, Intro to Python, and the Comp TIA+. The next goal is to identify current career and technical education course pathways, consult with community and business leaders to determine workforce needs, assess resources and facilities currently, and survey students to determine interest. My strategy for this is to develop a local CT advisory board committee that meets at least twice a year to evaluate current programs and align with current industry standards and that meets the needs in the local area. These contacts and partnerships will help guide the future internship placements of students in practicum courses, as well as give us a lot of feedback from the local areas of what type of people they are needing to work in our businesses locally as well. I'm hoping to have this put together and have our first, hoping I will have the first meeting to be held in February of 2022 with this advisory board committee. The next academic goal is going to be, MISD will evaluate our current enrollment and implement a plan to increase enrollment over the next five years. If you look at this chart, I have done the enrollment by programs at each campus. This is duplicated enrollment, every kid in every seat, whether they're taking one, two, or three, they're taking these courses. Right now, we're at about 78% of unduplicated students taking at least one CTE class. I find that to be very low. There's so many offerings in CTE, I would like to have a five-year goal of seeing it up to 90% of all of our students taking CTE courses. So my strategy at first is going to be evaluate current course offerings by surveying students with level of continued interest in our current courses, as well as possible future course offerings. And like I said, I've kind of shown you over there in that chart, varies campus by campus. There's lots of different reasonings, interest level, what's popular at one, it's not popular at the other. One's a new campus, one's a well-established campus, there's lots of, there's lots of reasons it may vary at each campus. My timeline to have all these courses, like I said, evaluating our current adding, of course, we're doing it during course catalog, so that by next year, we can do even more with it. So September 2022. The next strategy is to increase our CTSO, that's Career and Technical Student Organizations, offering to students for all CTE pathways to encourage participation and recruitment in their programs. CTSO, the most popular one I can describe is FFA. It's the world's largest youth organization. There's a lot of other ones that are just as amazing that are with other pathways. There's BPA, there's FCCLA, there's HOSA. These are all acronyms that are their student organizations where they have activities just like FFA. They go out and compete, they get scholarships, they do community service. The state of Texas has aligned these with our programs of study because they help recruit kids and keep kids going in that program. It gives them something extracurricular to do and to feel a part of something bigger than what they're in in class. So I'm, in order to increase all those participation, I've gotten teachers to, if they don't already currently have one, to create one and get a charter and start recruiting kids and getting their membership up and going to, if there's a regional contest, for the current ones that already have it, encouraging that to be increased. And so, this year would be a beginning charter year for them, and then the next year, they would be held accountable by May 2023 to have some sort of CTSO in place for every program. The last strategy for increasing enrollment is to increase the high school credit CTE course offerings at the junior high level, which align with the current pathways offered. My hope for that's also going to help with completers, they might get a course out of the way, and if they change their mind the next year, or get out of CTE for a year, it gives them an extra year to get, become completers in a program and get a certification. And we already, in a course catalog, we're already going to suggest these courses be added, and we're already in the works for that, to start small with next year adding I'm going to very briefly explain funding from CTE, because a lot of people wonder, how does this benefit the district? TA implemented in 2021 tiered CTE funding this summer. So it used to be across the board, any CTE class got the same amount of money. And so, everybody was like, let's put kids in CTE classes, let's just create one over here for a science credit and art credit over here. But they want kids to be completers in a program of study. And so, the way the state's holding districts accountable now is they're going to tie funding to what course it is. So the first tier is any course that's not in a program of study, it gets the lowest amount of funding. So if you just want to add a science course, add a science course, but you don't have that pathway, you get the least amount of funding. Tier two is any course that's a Level 1 or Level 2 in a program of study, and we'll talk about that in a minute, it's going to get 1.28 weighted funding. And then tier three is any course that's a Level 3 or Level 4 that's offered in a program of study, and you have to offer that complete program of study. Even if it's a Level 4 in one, but you don't offer all four courses, you don't get the 1.47 weighted funding. So the district used to, district, the state used to do, 1.35 was their weighted multiplier for all CTE. So this was their compromise. The upper level's going to get more, the lower level's going to get less, and it's going to encourage you to get kids to go all the way through your programs and take those upper-level classes. Here's an example of a program of study. I use animal science as an example, and the state has told us what level each course is on. So as you can see, it starts, the principles are lower levels, and they've determined, and some of them, we just don't really agree with, but they have determined what level they think each course should be at for funding. And the thought is, those upper-level courses really do need more funding because the kids are in laboratory-type settings, that you need more funding to purchase supplies and certifications, et cetera. So this is our formula, FTEs, full-time equivalents, basic allotment, and a weighted multiplier. A FTE is 1/6 or 1 class period. So when they're in one class, they get .167, which is 1/6 of the day for funding. The basic allotment for every student is 6160 for times .167. If they're there all day, they get the full amount, the 1/6. So here's my formula. There's 100 students in livestock production. If you look back at that program of study, livestock production was a Level 3. So it's going to be a 1.47 weighted multiplier. So if we do the formula from the top, we have .167 is our FTE for one class that they're in, and it's 100 students. So we get 16.7 times 6160 times our 1.47 multiplier, and I'm going to do 95% attendance because they're not in attendance 100% of the year. And we do get counted off on attendance, we can't draw funding when they're not in the seats. So an average is 95, some are less, some are more. So at 95% attendance for 100 students, we got, just 100 students in that one class, we got $143,660. 55% of CTE funds generated must be sent on costs directly related to CTE. That can be teacher salaries, certifications, supplies, buses, subs, it has to be only related to CTE. But the district gets 45% of the other money of it. So when you look at that 143,660, the district's getting 45% of that money. Here's an example of 100 students enrolled in a non-CTE course. 97,728. The same 100 students not in a CTE course, that's how much money they're bringing in the district. That was my quick finance lesson.
You made the message, you got the message.
See, Chris, that's how you make the numbers exciting.
Yeah. It's exciting.
I have a question for, in that regard. The 55% required to be spent on CTE funding, of course, in the past, we've caught some flak for not maybe following that number, or being able to account for that number is perhaps the best way to say it. What are we doing now to make sure we're doing that?
Um, I don't, I get the money given to me. So when the state allot-
Mr. Lynn, what are we doing now?
When the state allot's us money based upon enrollment, and usually, we start out the year based on our previous enrollment. So it's kind of like a guesstimate, this is how much enrollment you had last year, this is how much money you're getting. They then make sure we get the 55% in our CTE accounts and the 45 rest. And then in the spring, they usually kind of do a new snapshot. In a spring snapshot, they look at all of our numbers again and give us more or less, which enrollment's up this year, so we're hoping for more.
Well, when you talk about your goal three, you covered this.
Yes.
And it was also covered in the report by an independent third party.
We had to turn all of our finances into the-
And what did that report say about what we were able to do last year?
It, I don't know, it just said that we were, we exceeded, we met the 55% properly because they wanted to see, we had to turn all of our financial reports to them.
So-
Right on the 55%.
Out of excitement, I've completely shanghaied your presentation, Ms. Vance, I apologize, but-
Out of excitement, though.
But we do have, we have a member of the, of a booster club here for our program, we have a couple of parents here, and I want them to know that I was thoroughly impressed with your program review. The level of detail that you got out of this is exemplary. And it's like Ms. Turner and Mr. Kirby said earlier, we have reaped the benefits of these program reviews in many ways. It's telling us things, how to code things, how to, what areas might, we need to improve in. So I wanted to say a public thank you because I know we have people in the room that care about that kind of stuff. Y'all should come see it, come ask Amy sometime for what she found.
Y'all don't have a copy, they have a copy, but it will be posted on the website, transparency.
Under transparency.
Just a question.
I think what you've done here is really good. This is something that I, I just don't think as a country, we're strong enough in and it's something we really need to develop.
I did it at my first professional development workshop, I showed the teachers this. They have some accountability in enrollment and I want them to understand how their salary's getting paid, how we're getting supplies in their classrooms. And I did like a little quick like this, just to enlighten because some of, they've never even heard of, you know, oh, we need enrollment increase, well, here's the reason why. It pays for, you know, everything related to our programs and brings the district in money as well.
I promise not to interrupt you anymore, for a little bit.
Accept.
Are you done now?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, good. So district goal three is finance and operations. So my first goal, June first, no, it didn't start till July. Our first, our fiscal year starts July first, so I came in June first, which was the end of last year. You know, just getting my feet wet, meeting everyone. And my first goal was to allocate a budget to all campuses and departments. And I did that in July to August. And I looked at needs of the program as well as student enrollment and also teacher needs and input as requested from them. So since they've never had any allocated directly to their department, they've allocated campuses before, I wanted, didn't have much to go by other than like, I wanted input from them. What do you need to run your program every year? What are some needs you need outside of your annual expenditures that might be big expenses? So that was completed August twenty twenty-one to fully allocate all the CTE money that's needed for departments and for their programs. So my next strategy after that is to revisit our current year because I didn't really have a starting point to see what expenditures we actually had and make any necessary adjustments. I'm going to have our deadline for purchasing April first. That way we get a good idea of how much was spent, if we need to spend the rest of the money and what big purchases need to be made instead of waiting till the end in June fifteenth. We're going to shut off all spending April first so that those, we can get all of our purchase requisitions in. And like I said, revisiting so that maybe I can move some around and see what tweaks need to be made for the next budget year. The next strategy related to the budget is to eliminate any student course fees or student certification fees associated with CTE courses and cover all other associated student costs with CTE funding. This is a big one because I heard it in all directions whenever I came and I saw it and thought, why are we charging kids when we get this money from our funding for them to sit in that seat? So it's, it's hard if we've posted in the course catalog, it's something that's been approved and it's something that's already in process and there's people that have already paid. And so beginning this, the new course catalog, all course fees have been taken away. And during the current school year, nobody will be charged for certifications or anything related as far as that type of need.
Well, I lied, I am going to interrupt you. If you do nothing else, Ms. Vance, you have made a significant impact for a lot of kids. So thank you to everyone who made that possible. I'm sure y'all had to figure out a way to make the money work, but thank you because I hear about the fees a lot as been, having been a barrier, so thank you.
So, I'm going to interrupt, this is my, this is my thing. So, so ag, when we talk about ag, I was, I was astonished to see what our kids have here as compared to what I saw in other districts. And we are, we have been a rural-ish community until the last four or five years where it's expanding. I just feel like we, we should be, we should have the best ag facilities in, in, in the metro area. But on top of that, I mean, ag is so important to, when you raise an animal and you take care of an animal and you, and you, you do all those things, it builds a lot of life experience. How can, how can we get kids who can't afford that animal or to raise that animal? And how do we generate funds to help those kids participate in these programs?
There's a booster club member in the house here, actually.
It's really hard because the district finances need to benefit all students. And so what did we see on there? Six hundred and ninety, or I don't know, seven hundred, whatever enrollment we would be buying animals for. And so the, the state really does put their thumb on how we're spending this CTE money and we have to make sure it benefits all students. And I feel like that would get a hand, like he said. Hopefully, we're taking, alleviating some of the costs the booster clubs have been putting, you know, have been paying for student stuff and teacher stuff and supplies and that type of stuff, that maybe us alleviating some of their programming costs, that they can help more with that type of stuff, with their fundraising efforts.
So when, I mean, ag in particular, it's such a, it, it, how do we get more kids into that? They can't afford, some of the kids cannot afford to participate and a booster club is just that, a booster club. And, and it's meant to, what's that?
He wants to say something.
I know he does, I, I, I just, sure.
Mr. Lynn, I'll, I'll yield the floor to you, how about that? And, and I want to say one other thing, the farming community around here chips in and helps out. For example, I've helped kids get animals now. They're all rangy, mangy-looking animals, but you know, it gives a kid something to work for, you know, so.
Kind of like me.
Sorry, Ms. Vance, promise, we really are excited, floor's yours again.
Let's help. I'm a former ag teacher, I didn't know if you knew that, that's my background in education. I'm really passionate about ag. We have a lot of amazing programs, but of course, this is a, has a lot of ag backing in the community and things and that is on my forefront of, you know, priorities as well. I, I think, like you said, recruiting into ag, there's lots of awesome things they have going on currently and building the programs, our teachers are amazing. We really have awesome teachers on both campuses. So they have lots of great ideas too on building the programs and, but we're busting at the seams right now. I feel like we've got really great enrollment at both campuses. The, the next thing is the MISD will create a CTE visioning committee of teachers and community members to assess current and future needs of our programs and identify any barriers that may prevent growth. We had this on September fourteenth and it was really awesome to hear everybody that came out and gave ideas. Mr. Lynn was there. We had a really great turnout. I was, I invited all these people and thought maybe fifty percent would show up and ninety-eight percent of the people showed up. And so they, the strategy was that we could utilize this group to analyze and evaluate and have these great discussions to make recommendations for current and future improvements, including recommendations for a potential bond.
And tomorrow night at the bond task force meeting, will that information that was gathered be shared, Ms. Vance?
Yes, it will. The summary of the meeting, they talked about space, space is limited for programs to grow. They talked about, besides space, specialized learning labs and facilities and spaces need to be expanded, we're busting at the seams for the current specialized place. We saw that comparing us to Willis and what we have. And they brought up technology and resources as well. The next goal related to finance and operations was engaging a third party to conduct a program evaluation and make recommendations for improvements. Strategy is to analyze and evaluate these results and make recommendations for current and future improvements and this got completed a few weeks ago. Some highlights of that program evaluation that y'all have copies of. The evaluation indicated a very accurate PMS reporting. Kind of funny thing about that is they, a few weeks ahead of time in any audit, they send you some action items like, hey, can you send me these reports so like, so we can go through them? As I got the reports, I started finding all of it and changed it right then. So the few things they caught on, I was reading it before I even sent it off and was like, oh my gosh, I'm changing that, I'm changing that. So it was very few things that I changed before they even sent us the recommendations. So, but it was, they had really great things to say about our PMS reporting. The finance report and budget they reported was allocated properly as required by the state with fifty-five percent of the funds going to support student instruction. Some recommendations they had was to increase the CTE industry-based certifications that are completed by students and also increase the career and technical student organizations offered to students that align with these programs of study. Another recommendation if you saw in there was talking, and it was already on my agenda, but they reinforced it, that we need to remove any barriers that involve requirements of students enrolling. This is course fees, an application, admissions committee or approval. All those are going to be removed with our programs. We don't want any barriers preventing any student at Montgomery ISD to take our courses. CTE enrollment is something they commented on over the last five years, you might have seen that, there was a chart. We're only at one-point-seven percent growth and the district growth was higher over the last five years. So that's something to look on and, I mean, I've talked about it in my goals as far as recruitment and enrollment and that type of thing. Human capital, MISD CTE will create and implement professional development opportunities that align with specific needs of CTE staff, which responds to the various academic needs of students. My strategy for this is to provide CTE training to staff as well as support and encourage the many opportunities available throughout the year for staff to receive this specialized training and professional development in their content area. This can be through Region Six and this can also be the professional organizations that they have, that have professional development conferences related to the subjects they teach as well. And I've wanted all teachers for their requests for this and as I go ahead and send them out the information, here's the conference, here's all, you know, this is everything we need and I support them in any way possible throughout the year, which is going to be my timelines end of this school year for that. District goal number five, which is communication and customer service. MISD CTE will communicate with parents and students about current program offerings and highlight achievements throughout the year. MISD CTE will create social media pages, is how I'm going to, my strategy for this, that'll be shared with district pages and highlight programs and activities that they offer, this was done in August. My next strategy for this is to create an informative and interactive website within the district site that highlights a program offerings, certifications aligned that are offered, and my timeline for this is January. My one-man show, my limited amount of time. I'll get to it, but it's going to be really informative for anyone that wants to see about our programs. What's next in CTE? Some of these are reflecting back on my goals and some are just some things I've had on my horizon that, you know, I may not have touched on this year, this, tonight. Increase student enrollment in CTE courses. Evaluate current program offerings, determine which align with our district goals and eliminate or add appropriately. Evaluate future growth, how that fits into potential bond possibilities and updating our current CTE facilities. Implement more career and technical student organizations, add more student certifications. Another thing on my goal is district-wide CTE curriculum alignment, to try to get some alignment from both campuses and the programs and get a lot of curriculum alignment happening. And my last goal is, or my, my last, what's next in CTE is parent, student, and staff education on our CTE programs of study and completers required by state. I think that's key, educating parents and students and staff because a lot of staff members don't really understand that are involved in scheduling and helping students and educating students as well. We have to get everybody educated like I did with y'all, talking about these programs and why it's important for kids to take these courses and to take the courses in the sequence.
Ms. Vance, what's in a really important group of employees that really needs that type of training? That have a direct result of-
Counselors.
And is that going to happen this year?
Yes, CTE is sending them to our CTE conference counselor training. And I have two counselors from each high school campus going to the, our CTAT, Career and Technical Association of Texas, our winter, our mid-winter conference, they have a whole day counselor training for campus counselors. And so we're providing that opportunity for them to start getting them some more knowledge on TEA requirements from all the CTE programs. Any questions?
Oh, yes. So Ms. Vance, a number of times tonight, you've mentioned that we have eleven of the fourteen clusters. We have sixteen programs of study. You talked about our low enrollment and throughout there, you've mentioned facilities. And for example, like not having an automotive facility, not having an engineering and oil and gl, and gas facility. Are you able to do these things, the, the things that you just listed in what's next in our current facilities?
Not adding those clusters, no.
Okay, so adding, improving or adding facilities would allow you to accomplish these things, correct?
Yes.
I, I want to just say that I was impressed with Willis. It was a very beautiful building and I think for me, if I had that opportunity to go in those kinds of facilities and learn the kinds of things you're talking about, I probably wouldn't have changed majors in college as many times as I did. But I want to say, I, I think that's a critical part of where we need to go in this district, in my opinion. Our facilities need considerable consideration.
And I, and I hope that gets, and I was impressed with Willis, but, but I left there with like a lot of people who own businesses. The programs that I saw there were great programs, but, but, and it was a great facility, it was a wonderful facility and we do need those facilities. But I left there thinking to myself, can I hire anybody that comes out of here? And the answer is no. And, and I want to, I want us to think about it, and I'm not saying that, that there's a bad program there, it's not. My thought process may be different than another, another person who may not be a business owner. But ag for me is, is, is an area that I think we've got to really step up to the plate and we do need better facilities, we do need, we need, we need, we need to give our kids the very best. I, you know, I grew up on a farm and I'll tell you, I don't, I don't do that anymore, it was hard work. It makes a big difference when you're out there at five AM in the morning busting, busting ice out of ice buckets so the horses can drink, right? But those kind of things kids learn, doesn't matter whether you go to college or whether you're, you, you going to go out and you, you have a career in agriculture. But those sort of life experiences are things that, that shape our kids. And I think if we have the proper facilities, to your point, Matt, and we need to really be talking about that because we have an opportunity to start talking about that right now, what do you actually need and what is it that's going to make our CTE program here in MISD the best around? I want it to be the best. And I think it does start with ag, I think it's, it starts with the right facilities and the right focus on that. So how do you pair the right programs with the right facilities and then what do we need to make that a reality?
Board members, questions?
So you're saying we, we have enough facilities to do this now?
No, I don't, I think we've, we had, we don't have the right facilities. I think we need, we don't have the right-
The whole thing about the CTE is to find a student's passion that's something they didn't know they had.
That's right.
So that's what we need to, you know.
And I, and I guess that's what I'm saying, it's a good way of putting it, is do we have the right programs to fire up their passion to participate in these programs?
If we offer more programs, those students will find that passion.
And I'm going to say too, not every kid in CTE is in the courses because they're wanting to be in that career, not college-bound. They're also developing lots of skills that they're going to have the rest of their life.
Yeah.
I, I was in ag. I didn't want to be a farmer or rancher, I, I raised cattle and was on a farm. But I was in ag and I have, I have debilitating social anxiety. But in ag, I learned public speaking skills, standing in front of y'all. And I learned leadership and I learned a lot of things, I learned horticulture, gardening. I learned a lot of skills and I wasn't ever going to be a farmer or rancher per se. I went to college to be an ag engineer. And whenever I started taking all my freshman courses to be an ag engineer, I quickly realized that's not something I wanted to do. And when I looked back at my life on the thing that made the most influence on my development as an adult was ag and FFA. And that's why I became an ag teacher when I realized how much it did for me as a person. But it's just an example that these CTE courses are developing them into all kinds of skills that aren't just strictly related to that. You're working hard towards something, you're learning a skill, you're getting a certification. I mean, when you're going to hire somebody, it looks good, I mean, we always, we used to get the Microsoft Office certificate and things like that. It's showing that you worked hard towards something and you earned these skills. And so that's like a lot of, it is a lot of students that are, you know, are, may not be college-bound, but it's also a lot of college-bound students taking these courses and learning about something they would have never had the opportunity to learn about. Automotive, the school I came from had automotive. We had a lot of kids in automotive that weren't going to be mechanics. But guess what, they know how to change an oil and tire and do all kinds of servicing that they could do on their own cars now. And those are lifelong skills that they've learned and it wasn't necessarily their career, but it was skills that they got out of it.
When you talk to university presidents and they talk about the skill set for the future of higher education and what students are going to need to be successful in college, it's critical thinking, collaboration, communication, problem solving. When you talk to leading industry individuals who say this is what students need to have the workplace skills for future jobs, it's critical thinking, collaboration, communication, problem solving. It's not an either or, it's a both and. And if we're going to be the premier school district in the state of Texas, we can't just stand behind putting kids in college and having them ready on day one. Have to commit to them also being career ready as well.
Yeah.
And I think parents would be so excited to hear you. Well, really, you know, you, you give future to their, to their kids and they, they probably don't know what they want to do, but I think they would love to hear from you.
And I think the, the, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry.
I, I just think the diversification too, and the education of our community and the parents is it's not just ag, it's not just shop, it's not just welding. I mean, you look at some of these other programs and our kids are going to benefit, the parents are going to benefit because they're going to have college courses when they graduate that they don't have to pay for. They might test out it. And so they're starting so far ahead just taking these. And I think as we move forward, that's the focus. But there's so much more than just ag and shop and certifications. I mean, it, it, it's college readiness as well.
Well, I think we've got the right person to do this. Really, really hopeful. I mean, I'm really impressed with what you've, you presented.
And you're right. I wish parents and kids could hear about this too. I mean, I'm passionate about it. I think everyone needs to learn about our programs. And you ask people on the street, some of them don't even know we have CTE besides ag. They don't know all the rest of the programs we offer, or some of them don't even know about ag. So I think there's just a huge, you know, learning gap, like you said, that people need to hear about CTE. So anytime y'all want to talk about CTE, um, email me, call me.
Take you up on that, Ms. Vance.
That's right.
Uh, Ms. Vance, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And greatly appreciate it. Uh, next up, we have an information item on the academic calendar development process. Dr. Morrison?
Thank you, Dr. Fuller. So it is all about, uh, continuous improvement. And, uh, the calendar development is a, a source of great interest for our, uh, employees, for our parents and our students. It's important that we have a great process, that it's a transparent process and a process that is very collaborative. And just to share with you the upgrades that we're making on the development of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three academic calendar. I have Justin Moreno, Communications Director.
Good evening again, Dr. Morrison, um, Board President Fuller. Next time I request going before CTE. Overview of our calendar process, uh, for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Uh, we are seeking to implement a transparent pro- calendar development process that includes gathering lots of input, lots and lots of input. First with our district advisory committee and through a district-wide survey, which is currently out on the street right now um, to establish clear steps and we'll establish clear steps for developing draft calendar options prior to final board of trustee approval. Um, we are a district of innovation. Um, what is, what does that mean for the calendar? That means we can start the school year, uh, prior to the fourth Monday in August. If you're not a district of innovation, you must start, uh, no, no earlier than the, the first, fourth Monday in August. Um, what we know about the calendar, we know by law, uh, we, there are a hundred eighty-seven teacher contract days required. And by law, the calendar must include a minimum of seventy-five thousand, six hundred instructional minutes. And we do build, uh, minutes in case of weather emergencies. We've already had one of those this year. Um, again, a hundred eighty-seven teacher contract days. That's where we start. A number of student instruction days. Currently we have a hundred and seventy-eight. Uh, these are considerations that we look at for, uh, when we develop draft calendar options. Um, staff development workdays, there are currently nine. Um, we're currently surveying that number right now. On our count, on our current calendar, um, it's been, you know, share with us that the staff development and workdays aren't designated. So next year's calendar will designate, whether it's a teacher workday, a district development day, or a campus development day. Uh, first day of school and the last day of school. Um, short first week has been the preference. Our folks like starting the school year on a Wednesday or a Thursday. Uh, full thi- the full week of Thanksgiving week, um, has been the preference. I don't think we're going back to short Thanksgiving week anymore. Uh, the winter break start and finish, these are all another consideration. Do we break earlier in December or closer to Christmas? Um, come back earlier in January or a little bit, uh, second week of January. Uh, and then late arrival and early, early release days, these are items being discussed. And spring break week, uh, we've traditionally tried to follow our neighboring districts and universities. And then certain holiday observations, um, our current calendar has one, uh, holiday right, uh, per month that's observed, uh, that has been appreciated. And gathering input, um, as I mentioned, we started with the district advisory committee. Um, on September twenty-ninth, we put the, uh, advisory committee through a exercise where we asked a series of questions. The first question we asked was, what do you like about this year's calendar and what do we need to keep? And some of the, uh, more common answers were, um, starting the school midweek. Um, Wednesday or Thursday are the, is the preferred choice. The full week of Thanksgiving is pretty much universally appreciated. And then the mini fall break, I'm calling it, uh, was appreciated this year where there was a, uh, student holiday uh, before Columbus Day, which, and a staff development day, followed by the, uh, the, the three-day weekend, which was sort of a mini fall break. Next, um, we asked, what would you like to see different in next year's calendar and what are you willing to give up to make this change? Um, the answer was more professional development days. Reconsider the need for two early release days prior to the end of each semester. And a winter break starting a little bit later, so closer to the Christmas, Christmas and returning after the first week of January. And then what are your non-negotiables or must-haves in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three? Uh, more time for teachers at the beginning of the year, uh, two weeks for Christmas, one week for Thanksgiving. And first semester ending before winter break were the most common answers. So we do have, currently have a, a district-wide survey. Um, the link is on our website and that'll be open through the end of this week. There's actually already been over twenty-two hundred folks respond to it. So good, uh, good input we're gathering.
And Justin, when we get the, uh, survey complete, will we publish it?
Yes, we'll publish it.
Where would one be able to find it?
It'll be on the transparency page.
I wanted to get, I wanted to try that one.
So the survey is asking questions related to the satisfaction with the current calendar, um, first, last day of school preference. Uh, the holiday, holiday, uh, break dates and lengths, a number of staff professional days and student holidays. Remember, a hundred eighty-seven co- uh, contract days required. What's that right number of student days and professional development days? And other scheduling items like early release, secondary, late arrival days and, uh, block schedule at the secondary level. So next steps, um, on Friday, the survey will close. We'll get some great input from that survey results with draft calendar options presented to DAC next week, the second DAC meeting. DAC will then solicit input on the drafts from their campuses. December first DAC meeting, uh, will narrow the calendar options down to two. And at the January twenty-sixth DAC meeting, a final draft calendar that will be recommended and then brought to, to the board on the, uh, February fifteenth board meeting. Any questions?
Ladies and gentlemen, questions? Please do your surveys if you haven't done it, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moreno, thank you. All right. Are there any questions on the monthly financial report? All right, hearing none, then this meeting is adjourned.